Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 15, 2013 Town Council Workshop, Council Meeting. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda, is there anyone that would like to speak from the public? Seeing no one, it's 7:01, we will close public forum. Next on the agenda, do I have a motion to accept the May 1, 2013 minutes? Counselor Bentley.
Motion to accept the May 1, 2013 minutes is written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Carmichael. Any discussion? Counselor Pickering.
Yeah, on actually page three of the minutes, it near the end of the, on page three, it listed Spring Street. It should be South Street.
Which page in our package?
Page three, well.
Oh, seven.
Seven, yeah.
Any other?
Take anyone else and get back to me if you would.
Does anyone else have any changes or questions?
No, I'm all set.
Seeing none, would you please call the vote?
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Pickering?
Aye.
Counselor Nazaro?
Abstain.
Counselor Pike?
Abstain.
Counselor Carmichael?
Aye.
Counselor Bentley?
Aye.
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the acceptance of the May 1, 2013 non-public. Counselor Bentley.
I think motion to accept the May 1, 2013 non-public minutes is written.
Do I have a second? Counselor Carmichael. Any discussion? Obviously, we have discussion, it's, we have to go into non-public. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Pickering?
Aye.
Counselor Nazaro?
Abstain.
Counselor Pike?
Abstain.
Counselor Carmichael?
Aye.
Counselor Bentley?
Aye, I thought one of them was on conference, though. I didn't know that they needed to abstain. Wasn't someone on the phone?
Not on the line.
No, okay, sorry.
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero and two extensions. Next on the agenda, the town administrator will give his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item is that, as part of what we should be doing as an annual process, we should be reviewing all the taxes exemptions that the town gives to nonprofit organizations and other various organizations in town. The assessing office, the new assessors have begun reviewing those applications, and we have some questions on some of them. So, we're going to be sending out forms, asking them to re-submit forms, and as well as backup for tax information, to make sure they still qualify as nonprofits and to continue to receive their tax exemption. Just want to let everybody know, in case you may hear something out in the community. The next is, I want, on April 25th, Counselor Pickering and I met with former Selectman Jerry Langen of Epping to preambulate the town border. We went to the three granite markers that delineate the boundaries between Epping and Newmarket, and actually, one of them does, is the border also with Lee. That one, there was an issue. There is currently a surveyor's pin where the border meets, and the homeowner moved the granite marker, and because it was quote-unquote "in the middle of their property," in their lawn. However, they cannot move that marker, and we're going to try to figure, we're working with the county, because that's also a county border, to make sure that that stone is replaced. For those who aren't familiar, those stones have been there well over 100 years, most of them. They have old chiseled marks of N and E, where, you know, which side is which for the town, and some of them actually have like South Newmarket. So, it was quite, it was interesting. I mean, one of them, we had to go out in the middle of the woods, and I came back and was somewhat covered with ticks when I looked down, but it was...
That, that South Newmarket one had to be prior to 1849, because that's when that happened.
Yeah, so it was, it was interesting, and I actually...
And it became Newfields.
Have been since approached by Lee to do that border as well. And we have to do that every seven years to make sure the borders are still there. The next item is that, just to let you know that we've been notified by FEMA that we're receiving an estimated $27,000 to go towards our cost for the February 10, 2013 lizard that hit the region. This represents 75% of the cost that the town incurred during the storm. It will, it will help offset some of the overages in the Public Works budget. One thing I do want to let you know, that it does not reimburse things that happen after the storm, so like snow removal, which is probably our number-one cost, they, they set the dates of the actual storm, and everything that you do between those dates is what gets reimbursed. So, there were, there's still additional costs that we have to incur because of the time after the storm. The next item is that, as mentioned at the last Town Council meeting, the Economic Development Committee met and reviewed a proposal from Peter Quas Consulting to assist them in implementing Chapter 6, the Town Master Plan. Mr. Quas is proposing a two-phase approach for this portion. First, he will work with the committee to perform an economic resource analysis of the town. They'll look at employment trends in the region and determine growth opportunities for the town. In addition, they're going to begin evaluating the resources we have to offer for economic growth. It'll include small business systems, communities, physical infrastructure, and possible development sites, and the current real estate market. The second phase will be to assist the committee in coming up with a strategy and action plan. This phase will come up with ways to market Newmarket, implement land use changes that may benefit economic development, as well as other items. The cost of the first phase is $3,500, and the second phase is $6,000. The committee is recommending that the, for the acceptance of the contract, in the sense it's under my spending authority, if there's no objection, I'm going to enter into this agreement so we can get moving on that project. Is there any questions on that, just I want to ask?
Counselor Bentley, and then Counselor...
Oh, that's still for me to make an motion.
Counselor Pickering?
We should be using the buttons, correct?
Yeah, it's okay. Counselor Pickering? Question?
Um, just, I got a statement here. One second here, if I can get it back. This is not the first Economic Development Committee that this town has had, and probably won't be the last. And, so, beyond that, I have a note that says, or question, "Are we duplicating work studies done in the past? Town Hall has a cartload of prior paid studies, and I, I do not want to pay twice for prior information already completed, even though the work might be a few years old." And I'd like to follow that up, and you can make the comment about everything that I've asked here, this'll be the final thing. Could I have access to all prior paid studies that are at Town Hall?
Yep, absolutely, you can get that. As for this study, I think it's, there is a difference here. One, it's not only to, to help with the study, but help facilitate this committee in achieving their goals. It's not just, you know, coming in saying, "This is what Newmarket needs," or "This is what they want," this is to work with the committee to determine that. Also, I think that's from, and again, I know there's two members of the Economic Development Committee on the council, that it's not so much, this time around, they want to find out, what does, what kind of economic development does Newmarket want, and what does it need? I think that's one of the benefits, the differences here. It's not a situation where it's just like, "Okay, guys, you can go out and rezone this for industrial." Well, I think this one's actually going to look into it more and say, "Maybe we don't want industrial in that area, we want light and, like, office space." And find out and talk to the committee, and talk to the committee, determine that. So, I think that's more, that's the difference between that and past studies. I don't know if I missed anything on that.
The only comment in this other council, but just in a quick response, because I had made a little notation, I think part of what the consultant's proposal, and it's, it's stated here, but this might help a little bit answer the question, part of the proposal, he's going to be giving the town some idea of what types of businesses are suited for the town and will fit into the town based on what's going on around us, with other communities, and how we fit into that. And I don't, you know, I am not familiar with all the studies that may or may not have been done in the past, but I don't think, from my experience, which really goes back to about 2001, as far as being involved in, you know, the businesses and whatnot with the Tiff District, I have not seen any type of study that was ever shared with me, talking about how Newmarket fit into the overall area around us, and it's about a 40, 45-mile radius, and, and, you know, how and what would be most suited for us. And I think the folks on the planning board, Val Shelton, you know, it stated that that was sort of the part of Chapter 6 rewrite that they had done, that they were waiting to sort of move to the next phase, so this sort of, this really takes Chapter 6 and puts a button on it, so to speak. It sort of finishes it off, so that's all I can really, you know, state with respect to, you know, the studies. I haven't seen all the ones in the past, but I don't think they've taken into consideration as much as he's going to, as far as, you know, where we fit in.
Well, do you mind if I follow up?
Sure.
That's exactly where I'm coming from. I want to be 100% certain that we don't have some of the information we're asking this guy to obtain from us, sitting on a shelf at Town Hall, that has been done. I was a member of an earlier Economic Development Committee, and, and we actually had a paid Economic Development Person on the payroll for a while here, and I don't know, and I can't remember...
Remember when, roughly?
Well, no, right now I can't, or at this moment, I can't remember, but it's been some time. I just want to be certain that we don't have good information sitting around here that we can use and, and paying twice for it.
I completely agree with that, and I think one thing that we saw from the process was that we had one proposal, we looked at it and said, "Well, we already have all this information, we don't need to have this done again," and we asked for a different proposal, because the, Chapter 6 of the master plan, it was a lot of trying to get that information together. So, we asked for a revised proposal, and that's where it came back, for this one versus the previous proposal, which actually knocked the price down. But if there's data out there, we're definitely not going to recreate the wheel.
Thank you.
Counselor Bentley's been waiting.
It's a different subject, so if Counselor Nazaro or Wright have the subject that... No, I have nothing to add to this one, I have a different question.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything they want to add to this, specifically? Counselor Carmichael?
What are the dates you're looking at? When's this start?
Well, if, if we start with this contract, I'm hoping to have a meeting set up for next month. And I believe the timeline to get this done is roughly 60 to 90 days, give or take.
Yep, 90 days.
And then, and then, you know, I was going to say something after, but I don't want to get into that now, let people go. Based on any other, so what I think we should do, just to close this, maybe, Steve, you can have a look at some of the past studies to see if there's anything...
Absolutely.
I, I don't want to assume anything, because every time I assume something, it goes the other way, but I do think that the planning board, when they did Chapter 6, had they had that type of data and information, I think they would have integrated some of it into Chapter 6, and I don't think anything's been done for at least a decade, so if there is something, you know, you can take a look.
Yep.
And if there's anything that's actually tangible and can be used, you can let Peter know that, but I do think this, he's going to, I think, act as much as a facilitator, Larry, as, as an information gatherer, and I think that's going to help us as a committee, and then hopefully with the charrettes and the town and the planning, but you know, I'm hoping this is going to get everybody on the, excuse me, same page, so. Anyway, Counselor Bentley?
Well, I guess I'm still, so Counselor Pickering asked to see some info. You'll get it to him, you'll look at it, what's the next step? Because at one point, we need to do something and authorize, Steve, I don't think it needs to be a vote.
No, it's under my spending authority, so I can interfere into the agreement.
I would say, I would say if nothing is tangible that, that he comes up with, or, you know, we can shoot, he can send us an email, you know, stating what he found, if there's something that we needed further discussion, we can have that, if not...
I was just trying to avoid waiting two more weeks, if we can, if Counselor Pickering looks in two days and says, "Yeah, I guess it's pretty close..."
And I think that's, that's, you've got to understand that I'm going to find, if I find reports out there, that it's going to duplicate something, or that doesn't need to be updated, because it may be something that just may be out of date for a report, that would say, "Look, you already have this information, don't need to recreate it, I'd rather spend the money somewhere else, let's revise this."
That's my point.
Absolutely.
So, I still have a different thing?
Yeah. Why don't you ask your question, and then we'll...
I have something on this subject, yeah.
Okay.
Steve, do you have something? Counselor?
Yeah, I think it's more or less along the same topic, but I think where we're going here is, is the consultant has expertise not only about where Newmarket might fit into the area, but, you know, where we could aspire to be, you know, in terms of the types of development that could, could, we could actually attain, that we could hope to attract, is that sort of what we're hoping from the guy.
That's the goal.
And that, that has to be fresh, to be meaningful, it can't, it can't be old, or it wouldn't, it wouldn't mean anything.
Like I said, since I've been doing any kind of, having any input, it's at least a decade or more, and I haven't seen anything, but I'm, I'm happy to have Steve do that. Counselor Nazaro?
Counselor Levy, you said that we also are looking at for, this individual would be like a facilitator?
To work in conjunction with the committee and then the charrette, you know, when we have the public charrette.
Is that within, no, I don't have the contract in front of me, is that within the scope of work?
Yes, absolutely.
It's in Phase 2.
Okay, good. I just wanted, I just, I thought we talked about it, I just wasn't sure if it was in the final one.
Okay, so I got Counselor Wright, and then, why don't you, Counselor?
My question's going to be answered already.
Okay. Counselor Bentley?
It's just what I, Mr. Administrator, last year, we were, all handed a list of the tax exemptions. Can, can we possibly get that again?
Sure.
Because some were quite staggering, and we didn't really have the answer on a couple of them, like what their nonprofit was, but it was a huge amount. Thanks.
Are there any other questions regarding the town administrator's report? Counselor Nazaro?
This may, tax exemptions is what sparked me to write a note about this, but it may actually fall under comments from counselors, so stop me if this is the wrong time to bring it up. But when I saw tax exemptions, it made me consider, I know there's some communities that have, like, reduced tax rates for seniors?
Yep, elderly exemptions.
Yeah, have we looked at elderly exemptions in this community, or can we see what that impact would be?
Absolutely. I'll have the assessor review it to see what, where we are compared to others, and what the impact would be, because I know that's a, that's starting to become an issue in some communities, that if anything, some of them are very high.
Right.
So, it's starting to impact the bottom of the budgets as well, so I'll, I can do that, too.
Okay. It just seems like the right thing to do for a senior. Thank you.
Any other questions? I had a couple of quick ones. On page 20, and I'm not assuming you'll have any answer, but maybe you can just, I think it might be worth knowing. It said police activity was up 40%. Excuse me, is there a sense of what types of calls these increases are made up of?
I'll ask.
Yeah, I just thought it might be good for us to know.
Yep.
And then there were just a couple of other quick ones, if I can find them. Let's see. Let's see. Under the, on page 36, which I don't know if that is under this, it's under the Planning Department.
Mm-hmm.
It talked about the M2 report with Mr. Mayberry, and I was just wondering, you said it was going to be ready mid-May, so we're kind of there, so I was just wondering, when might that be on the agenda, or when might we get a copy of that report?
I have seen a draft, the planner and I are reviewing it, to see if there's some information that I know the council's been asking for that may be missing, before we present it to the final product of the council, so you should be getting it, I would say, within a week.
Okay, within a week. And, let's see, I think that's just about it, I just want to make sure there's not one other thing. I think that's it, for me. Counselor Pickering?
I have others here. One second.
While you're, while you're looking, can I ask one other one, unless you have it?
No, go ahead.
On page 38, the McKellen Dam consultant, it said, "They were $82,283, and I guess we're going to get $40,000 from a grant."
Mm-hmm.
And I was just wondering, is the rest, the balance, which is about $42,389, is that all going to come from essentially tax revenue, or...
Yeah, it's a CIP that's been established for dealing with that issue.
Were there any other funding? I know that at one point, they were kind of looking to see if there were any other funding, is there any other, like, the, there was...
As of right now, no.
They're, they're still looking, I know that, but...
Okay, I had to ask.
Yep.
Counselor Pickering?
On the Police Department, "To lighten the police load here in Newmarket, is it possible to use our taxpayer-funded Rockingham Sheriff's Department to do some of our police tasks to lighten their burden?"
I would have to know what tasks that you're...
Well, I don't have anything specific, but can they be used for anything other than handing, delivering notices to people, or...
I think if we were to contract for police services, that if they were to do patrols, I mean, that's something you'd have to discuss with the sheriff's office, but I don't know what their load would be over there for officers, so I could ask.
Okay, I have others. Fire and Rescue Department, their budget to date, actually the end of, I guess this is the end of April, is 20% less expenditure than a year ago at the same timeframe. Large items yet to come, and if so, what are they?
I don't believe there's any large items coming from the Fire Department.
So, after, that tells me after 10 months of this budget has elapsed, and if all major expenditures have happened, was this department over-budgeted?
Again, I, I'd have to look into it, I mean, I, I'm not going to say right now that it's over-budgeted, but, you know, there's, could be different things that, the previous year, again, I wasn't here for the history, but they may have had a number of calls or fire calls that had additional costs.
Yep.
Whereas this year, we didn't have as many calls, so the call firefighters aren't being called out, so we had savings there. But again, in the following year, we may get, again, the additional calls, so I'd have to find out what the history is.
That's fine, and whenever you can get back to me, I'd appreciate it.
Yep.
Public Works Department, "Would it make sense to check for rust now and treat a fixed spots that are fixable versus waiting to buy new trucks? Personally, I would like to see the town under a very frugal purchasing of vehicles commitment, which that would help achieve."
I can assure you that, yeah, right now, they are, they are looking at all their vehicles, I know Water and Sewer have been looking at their vehicles for rust and other damage, and I know Public Works has been doing that while they're in the field as well, so, and I've made sure that's a priority, and they, because I know you asked at the last meeting, whether or not they have a pressure washer, and they do.
Right. This is just a kind of...
Yep, nope, they do.
They have cleaned them now, I mean, if we have rust, do we just leave it, or do we treat it before it becomes a major problem for us?
If they're not using the equipment, they will treat it. I mean, they've got to make sure they also continue to do the job that they need to complete.
I'll make all of these brief, this one here is, "What is the schedule of the roadside cleanup of debris along the roadsides?" Getting questions on that one.
I guess I need clarification, what do you mean by debris?
Rubbish thrown out the windows.
Spring cleanup?
I'm not asking for a spring cleanup, but the town routinely, various times of the year, pick up debris on the sides of the road.
Like branches?
No, no, beer bottles, cans, trash.
Oh, like trash, okay, litter pickup, I'll find out, I'm, I'll find out when the litter crew...
I haven't seen any of that going on, so perhaps it happens later on in the year, I don't know, but people are asking questions on that one.
Yep.
One second here, I...
Take, take one second, I'll have Counselor Nazaro ask a question.
That's fine.
Counselor Nazaro?
Right. Thank you, Counselor Levy. So, love the, but, the format here, love the fact that we have the previous year's expenditure to check it against. For example, Fire and Rescue being 78% now and 98% last year, although, to me, it looks like 78%, we're 83% through the year, looks like we probably were under budget, we were overspent last year, more than underspent this year, but I, it's a conjecture based on...
Yeah, if you prorate it out, I didn't want to, but if you prorate it out, they're going to be within 5%, I think.
The, could we get, I know this is asking for something else, could we get projections for where they're going to end the year? So, I'd like to be able to compare where they, because to me, that allows us to make the decisions around how should we reallocate, reallocating the resources, financial resources we have left.
Absolutely.
So, okay.
Yep.
IT had no report? Was it vocational?
There was, no, there was death in the family.
Okay, thank you, that's all I need here, thank you. Welfare, we are way underspent, we're spent like 26% or 28%.
Yep.
So, either we are not letting people who are eligible for this know about it, or we completely misbudgeted that one.
We, we are letting people know about it, we still have the same applications, we have a new welfare director, who's been looking for alternative sources to send people to, because there's many agencies out there before we use the tax dollars. We realized this, and if you remember, in the net and fiscal year 14's operating budget, we reduced welfare greatly.
Yep.
So, it's, I'll say it's just that we have a new individual in there who's, you know, really making sure and looking at other alternatives that we can use.
Okay.
My recollection is that they weren't paying for, they were paying for things in the past that maybe they...
They shouldn't have paid for.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Two more, do you want to let someone else go, or?
No, go ahead and finish.
Um, McCalland Dam.
Mm-hmm.
So, you mentioned it was like 80-something, it's like 80-something, basically, we spent 42, like, if you do the math based on the grant, we spent about $42,000.
Correct.
How much of that is against the petition warrant article from a couple years ago that authorized $45,000 to be expended?
I believe that would be the...
All of it?
Most likely.
So, they are literally at the end of the financing of that petition warrant article?
You are going to be getting, the next, June's workshop topic is the McCalland Dam.
Okay.
So, they will be coming forward to you with an update and exactly where we are.
Then, okay, I will save any follow-up questions for that. And my last one is, first of all, great job to yourself and the department heads for us being so much underspent, we're about 70%, 77%, you said, expended, and we're 83% through the year. I know that we have a lot of options of what we can do with any extra revenues, one of them is obviously reducing the tax rate, which would help everyone, but I would be remiss if I did not bring up the amount of times I am asked for a spring cleanup, and that, I know, I think it ran around 30K in the past, and if there's some way that we could balance not just tax relief, but also perhaps a spring cleanup, I think that the residents of this town would be very happy to see that.
And that's what we, I've been monitoring that, I know Counselor Bentley brought it to my attention, I have also heard it a number of times, received emails, and you're right, it wasn't budgeted last year, it's not budgeted next year. I am looking at the budget to see if there's some way we can, it may not be a spring, it may be a fall cleanup, but we still an opportunity, it may not look the same as it always has.
Right.
But we are looking to see what we can do.
And...
Because I've heard it, I mean, I've heard it loud and clear from the people, I just want people, let everybody know that that's something we're looking at, definitely.
It is a service that the residents are frankly demanding.
Absolutely.
So, thank you very much, that's all, thank you, Counselor Bentley.
Counselor Pickering?
This is the Rec Department. Back in April, the Rec Department made available to seniors who didn't have transportation available to bring them up to the meal site for a monthly meal with the folks up there, and I'm, I'm young, even though I look old, so I seem to be getting feedback from older people on this. Just kidding. And there's quite a bit of appreciation on that one, it really made these people's days brighter, those folks that are shut in without transportation, and send, send my And send my thanks over to Jim Hilton for somehow making this possible, because it certainly has been appreciated. And I may be done here, I'll be quickly.
Why are you looking, Larry?
Go ahead.
Just a quick one, Steve, on page 45, under Revenue Report.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I just made a little notation. Under vehicle registration, this is more formatting, you know, the way the information's addressed.
Okay.
For revenues, could we be given a dollar amount as well as the percentage? For example, how many dollars is 6% higher than the anticipated quay to? For example, the building permits were 97.31 more than we budgeted. Rather than give a percentage, could we be given a dollar amount? Because I think in that case, we were given a dollar amount, and I think with motor vehicles, we were given a percentage.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? So, sometimes it's, you know, it was good to know the dollars, but if it was, if they gave us both, we'd sort of see exactly where we stood. Obviously, that's where we're getting, where, for the public, a lot of our anticipated revenues are coming in higher.
Yeah.
Which is, which is good, you know, auto vehicles and building permits, et cetera. Larry, is there any other?
I'm done. Thank you for having patience.
Oh, Councilor Nizaro?
Just to dovetail off what you said, Chairman Levy, I would love to see a chart or something done, like, kind of what you have at the bottom of all the departments, that would have like the percents and the numbers for revenue as well as expenditures. So, I think it would be really easy for us to process, and I know that I'm saying what I would like, and I'm just one councillor, but it's just, the easier we can make it to process all this information.
Page 59 has a chart of all revenues that were collected.
What page?
59. It doesn't get into as detail as the motor vehicle on that one.
Yeah.
But it does have the taxes, licenses from the state, the percentage, and it does the overall general fund. So, it gets, that's just the introductory memo, the backup is behind that.
For whatever it's worth, I think we've been giving a lot more information than we ever had in the past, so I mean, I think that's, I think that's a good thing. That being said, I think we're good with the reports. And now we have a presentation, I think, that Matt Angel's going to give us, Finance Director. And there will be no action taken tonight.
That's correct.
For the record.
Councilor Levy?
Oh.
What about reports from council committee?
Oh, I apologize. Excuse me.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Sox are losing anyway, you don't want to get home.
Just add it, I got that.
Thank you. Councilor Pickering, Budget Committee meeting since our last meeting?
Yes, we met on April 29th, and at the meeting, Meg Looney-Moore was made an alternate when Cliff, Cliff is absent. School Board member is going to be, let's see, no, Judy Ryan, excuse me, was excused. She was out of the country, so that was that. And then they had the vote on the Roseanne versus Michael Lang for the seat that was open, and that was a five to four vote. Michael Lang being the winner of that vote will be sitting on the Budget Committee. They discussed the earnings in both the publications for the town and the school, and hopefully try to make things fair, more fair in the future. Some of the earnings salaries that were shown weren't, didn't reflect what the employee was making in his regular job. It was additional things added on and so forth. So, they're hoping to, through the town and the school, try to iron that out and try to make it fair in the future, so when you look at the thing, it's actual what the employee earned for salary from the community. Talked about insurances on the, at the school. Any employees hired before 2007, 89% paid by the town, 11% paid by the individual. And after 2007, on the school side, was 85% paid by the town and 15% paid by the individual. On the town side, we had 49 employees, insurance paid 80% by the town, 20% by the individual. We had two employees at 90% paid by the town and 10% by the employee. And Chairman Snyder proposed holding informational public forum to bring town and school budgeting issues together before the community, and that was the crux of what we did.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Larry? Councilor Pike, Conservation Commission?
Yes, we met Thursday last week on May 9th. There were committee and subcommittee reports, and spent quite a bit of time talking about the McAllen Dam. And then there was discussion of a potential swap at the Heron Point, the conservation land at Heron Point, where there had been passed, there had been a, a trailer was put on the lot that was the wrong place, so the access was not as should be. So, there's discussions about a lot swap there. Then the other, there was a discussion that the use of the Shanda Park for the half, Great Bay Half Marathon was a great success, and also discussions of funding requests that have, similar to have been done in the past, such as a fishing derby, a field trip funding, and conservation scholarship, and those were all voted to continue, and there have been invasive species removal. And I would just take that moment to say, I was really impressed. It was my first meeting with the group, and the dedication of the people on that committee is really, they've obviously been doing this for a long time, and they really put a lot of effort in, out there pulling weeds and invasive species. So, it's a, it's a very impressive group in their dedication to the town. And the last, there was one other thing I wanted to mention. No, I guess I'll, I think I'm missing something, but I'll stop there.
Maybe you were going to work with them on getting rid of the invasive species.
It would be a good idea. When I retire, as I...
There you go. Thank you very much. Councilor Wright, Planning Board?
Yeah, we met last night, and we had three lot line adjustment application. One was for the, by Newmarket Mills LLC, and that was for the gas station, which eventually we turned into a restaurant. They wanted a lot line adjustment on that. Then also, Councilor Pike also mentioned a lot line adjustment for 18 Lamprey Park, and this is basically the trailer fiasco. And it'll be coming for the Town Council, because it does involve town land, so we'll be seeing that shortly. And it's, it's one of these things that unfortunately happened, but it's being taken care of, and the town will not incur any survey costs or anything like that. The trustees or the estate is handling those costs. That was sort of nice to see, instead of getting saddled with a problem.
And unfortunately, this just takes a long time to do.
It does take a long time. And the other one, there's a lot line adjustment on 206 Gona Drive. Basically, they want to subdivide a piece of property. And also was brought up that, at one time, the Planning Board came for the Town Council about impact fees, and it was brought up, they actually wanted to do assistant development charges. And Chairman Bonham will be speaking sometime to you, Steve, about that, and basically they wanted to know where we were at that point.
Just, yeah, just on that, because we had discussed it, I think, as a council last year. I thought we were supposed to be given the pros and the cons and the revenue differences between the two, you know, because I don't think, you know, the impact fees were not in a timely manner being utilized, so we were giving back, I believe, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars over, over the last, Matt would probably have a better idea, but it was significant dollars. So, I think we've been waiting to see what the pros and cons are. Because, you know, one of my questions, you know, if you're going to be speaking to them, would be, you know, had we not lost the money, had we, you know, actually utilized it, or if that hadn't fallen dormant or lay dormant, would we, you know, have been in better position?
Mm-hmm.
Because, you know, when you start giving back six figures a few times, it adds up. So, anyway.
Figured out what I left off. There was quite a discussion about surface water removal, and somebody took pictures, I think it was over in the Follett Brook area, I wasn't that familiar with the geography, of a tank truck that removed water from the brook. And they, the Conservation Committee had put signs out in past years specifying that you are not allowed to remove surface water. So, there was concern about that and a need to go out and check at the sign. And on that one, I actually, as I was taking a ride out, bike ride out Bay Road, I actually saw one of the signs, and it almost to me looked like that the sign wasn't altered, it looked like it was faded. So, it's something that they're going to check into there, because the signs, that sign on Bay Road as well, it sounds very similar to what had happened to the other one, in that it doesn't say what the intent of the town was anymore. And then there was a discussion about whether there could be a place where tank trucks that needed water could be directed to either purchase or use water, where it wouldn't be harmful to the town, and there was going to be further discussion about that.
Thank you. Are you all set? Now, we can have our presentation by Finance Director Angel. And again, it's regarding electricity, I believe.
Yep, it is. Good evening, Town Council. I'm Matt Angel, I'm your acting Finance Director. And I just want to kind of give you a quick update as to where we are with analyzing our electric needs, okay? Quickly, we have a current contract that will take us through the end of December. It's just over seven cents per kilowatt hour. And I think earlier someone had asked if we were going to get out of that contract early, it would cost us somewhere between 16 and $17,000 just in contract damages. Now, the school had to select a new electric provider pretty quickly, just a short time ago, and the town went out on their RFP as well. Now, the school had selected a 36-month contract at just over seven cents per kilowatt hour, and in that same RFP, they were quoting the town about seven, almost seven and a half cents per kilowatt hour over a 49-month period, which is what they were recommending. Now, what's interesting is today I got a phone call from another competitor, and they were offering a range of electric rates between six and a half cents per kilowatt hour to seven and a half cents per kilowatt hour. So, let's quickly go into a quick discussion on this. Of all the electric providers that I have spoken to, every single one of them is saying that the cost per kilowatt hour is going to rise over the next couple of years. And if we are going to enter into any kind of contract, there are risks between short-term contracts and long-term contracts. Of course, long-term contracts are going to protect you from, from rising electric costs, and short-term contracts, of course, protect you from dropping interest costs. I mean, not interest costs, but electric costs, electric rates. So, what I'd like to recommend, though, is, number one, we stay with our current provider until the end of the contract. Number two, we conduct our own RFP, because in the school's case, there was only one provider that, that gave a proposal. I'd like to try to call a bunch of providers and make sure that they, they put in a proposal. Secondly, I'd like to ask the Town Council to suspend some of its, its rules so that we can speed up the process of approving the contract. Part of the risk that the town was running into was the length of time it takes for the contract to be read before the Town Council and to be approved. Alternatively, the Town Council could authorize the Town Administrator to enter into the contract and do the RFP, and then report back to the Town Council. And finally, I'd like to realign this contract so it correlates better to our fiscal year. Currently, it ends in the middle of our fiscal year, thus making it, our budget more susceptible to rate increases that we haven't budgeted for. Okay? Any questions?
Just a comment on the contracts of the fiscal year. We have a number of contracts that do not end, that do not coincide with our fiscal year. I don't know why, but that's one of my sort of backburner goals, that any time a contract comes up, try to negotiate it so it ends on June 30 versus December 31. One of the big ones that we're going to look at is our propelling liability insurance currently ends on December 31st, which doesn't make sense, so.
So, we just got, we just got this, Matt.
Yes.
So, you know, I don't think anybody's really had a chance to analyze it, so if I'm not exactly on the money, just...
That's fine.
Work with me a little. You're saying, if we went out to rebid, you're getting quotes from between six and seven cents, and now that doesn't obviously include the line charge from PSNH, correct?
Correct.
So, that's about, is that like another four, four or five cents or something like that?
Yeah, something like that.
And, and right now, that turns out to be a fairly competitive rate?
Yes.
What we got. The only thing I didn't understand is, if we did get a lower rate, and just for sake of argument, that's six.
Mm-hmm.
That would, they obviously haven't analyzed our usage and all the meters we have and all the rest of it. Is that correct?
That's right. I gave them all that information today.
Okay, so it could, so I guess the only thing I would say is, if for any reason, which I'm doubtful that it will work out that way, but if, if it should work out closer to the six, you could probably run the numbers and see the difference in the savings.
Exactly.
And you're planning on doing that, I'm assuming?
I will.
And, and the 16,000 to 17,000 is damages because we're breaking a contract?
Early.
And it's in the contract?
Yes.
And it spells out, how did they arrive at the 16 or 17?
They did not elaborate, and the contract does not elaborate on how to calculate that.
So, do you feel completely comfortable that if it got to that, we would, we would fail?
I feel confident that the rate that we've got right now is fair, okay? I'm feeling that the rate that is being quoted to us is fair, but we may be able to do better. Okay?
Mm-hmm. But the part I want to know about is, if we did for any reason have to break the contract, just for any reason, if you said, geez, we can save X amount of dollars that exceeds that?
Yep.
You don't sound convinced that that damages number is firm at this point?
I sound convinced that it's going to be around at least 16,000, and my initial reaction to it was, is I don't even think that I could make up that difference with a better contract at six and a half cents per kilowatt hour.
Okay.
And that's what I was hoping to get at.
Okay.
But...
Counselor Nizaro?
So, I just want to, one, thank you, Town Administrator, for trying to align us to the fiscal year versus the calendar year, because that makes absolutely no sense in the budgeting process. So, kudos to you on that. Councilor Levy already hit, or Chairman Levy already hit the usage analysis to make sure that our break-even cost includes the 16,000, or worst-case scenario, 17,000. We probably should do that analysis on worst-case scenario?
Okay.
Rather than best-case scenario, my personal opinion, because that's more realistic, I think. And as far as point three goes for recommendations, I think your recommendations are solid, but I would rather that we suspended the rules for the second reading than authorize, no offense to the Town Administrator. I would rather we just suspended the rules and had the council vote on it, so that it's all in alignment with our purchasing policy, rather than having, authorizing him to sign a hundred-something thousand-dollar contract. So, that is all I have. Thank you.
Councilor Wright?
Matt, I have a, how do you vet out these people that provide electricity? I mean...
It's going to be tough, but the...
I mean, I hate to say, you know, I hate to end up the school's position, you know, we maybe save a half a cent or whatever, and then all of a sudden find out that that wasn't the best way to go.
Okay.
By a while, Wes.
The school had a viable provider originally, okay? It's just that they didn't have their funding in order, and that's why they were put out of business.
All right.
Okay? It's going to be difficult to make sure that whoever we go with has their funding in order, but we will certainly try. Now, in every case, we're going to make sure that every vendor we look at is going to be licensed by the state of New Hampshire, and they actually have that information out on their website.
All right, thank you. Town Administrator?
Thank you. I'm asking a question, but are we considering also, I think we should consider a broker situation as well?
Okay.
That what you normally do is, a broker comes in, works with the town, they get paid by the electrical providers, and in return, they come in usually on a monthly or quarterly basis and say, this is the best rate you can get out there right now, I recommend, you know, they do the finagle and to get the rates. They're usually saying not to exceed number, so if something goes wrong, that they would have to, to either, or you just stay with the electrical provider. And actually, one of the other additional things is, if the worst-case scenario is you go back to PSNH. If there's nothing cheaper than PSNH, they trigger you back there. I just thought that would be another item to look at, just see if we can get a, it may be not as stable, but you may have the savings at the end of the year.
Also, PSNH is petitioning the PUC right now to have a more favorable electricity rate to woo back any customers they lost. So the fallback position is actually a safe one if PSNH is successful.
Yeah, good. Counselor Nazaro?
Yeah, sorry. Thanks. Chairman Levy, sorry to talk twice here, but I don't want to kick the, like, you know, whatever the version of finances of going out and kicking tires.
Yeah.
But however we time the RFP, based on council meetings, probably already thinking this, but I don't know how long they lock in their rates for, but you probably help your cause by setting it out as close to the council meeting as feasible.
Okay, the provider that submitted a proposal to the school, they locked in their rates only for a couple of days. There was no way the town could respond quickly enough.
Unless you time the RFP-
Yes.
...against a council meeting so that we could act more nimbly.
That, and also put in my RFP that they can hold it for five, ten days.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
And just one quick question. On that, we got a memo from, I believe it was from you, Matt, regarding impact fees?
Yes.
I just had one question on under wastewater, and is there any reason it wasn't in the packet?
It was just an informational memo.
Oh.
Yeah.
It says the wastewater has a hundred and thirteen thousand is an ending balance, and it says the next refund date is nine twenty-seven of thirteen-
Okay.
-which is kind of coming up.
Yeah.
So you got a plan for that? Is that the plan? Okay, I just thought I'd ask because it's coming up pretty-
As far as I know, he has a plan for it.
All right, because it's coming up pretty quick.
It is. Yeah. I just put that date in there just to keep the board aware that I do have a potential refund possible.
That's the, that's the one that's most pressing, correct?
Yes, it is.
That I could see. Okay, I just had to bring it up, so. Well, I guess, Counsel Pickering?
The current situation where deregulation has happened in the electric industry is, in my opinion, shaky at the, to say the least, because right now, everything is primarily based on natural gas. The natural gas prices are extremely low. Henceforth, these people are able to wheel and deal and make deals that PSNH can't make because they've been forced by the Public Utilities Commission to keep these older plants online, which costs more money per kilowatt hour to produce than natural gas. If natural gas takes a spike, you know, this whole, this whole thing could-
Yeah.
-be blown out of the water, and you're going to go right back to your provider that you originally had.
Good.
I mean, there's no guarantees here.
No, it's, all it is, is just make the best possible decision. Decision now for the future.
Yeah, the only guarantee we have, I believe, is if we fix a rate and they don't go out of business.
That's right.
I mean, that's-
But you don't even get that good rate if they go defunct like that outfit did in Manchester.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Any other questions? We're good?
All right.
Well, that's a good segue for Sean. Sean's going to make his presentation regarding the water treatment plant facility, Macintosh Wells as well, so why don't you-
I actually have this. I have it on the screen so people can see it at home.
Right. If the folks can see it at home, is there any reason we need to shut the lights?
I don't believe so, no.
Because we have it on the packet on PowerPoint. Good.
The press doesn't need to see. He's playing his iPhone anyway, so. Let's see, he wasn't paying attention.
Can you just make sure they can see it?
Basically, tonight, I brought this, I want to go over the process for engineering services and what we have done so far so the council can make a decision on what direction they would like me to take. So first, it's actually a very quick presentation. First, the, how we select engineers for water and wastewater projects that are eligible for funding. The first thing is we need to follow the process that is set forth by the New Hampshire DES, and the first thing that we need to do to be eligible for funding is that we have to choose an engineer from the New Hampshire DES pre-qualified consulting engineering list. And the way we do that is we need to do a qualification-based process. It cannot be done on dollars, so it cannot be done on a bid, it has to be done on qualifications. So, the required selection process is first, we have to advertise a request for proposals from the engineers. On the list, we have to review the proposals, we interview the firms, we rank the firms based on the interviews and the proposals, we negotiate a scope and fee. Then we send the scope and fee to the funding agencies who review and approve it. The reason it happens this way is that the funding agencies feel if they are giving us money, that they want to make sure that the scope is complete. They also want to make sure that they're not overpaying for the project. So they use similar projects that have been done and compare to what we have agreed to a scope and fee, and then they approve it or they send it back. So if I break it down, back in 2010, I'm just going to show you what happened with the wastewater treatment facility. And basically, in 2010, same thing happened with the Macintosh well, but I used the wastewater treatment facility because it was a larger project. First, and we advertised to the engineers on the list, we had a mandatory meeting where eight firms were present. The town received four submittals. The town offered interviews to the four submittals, one refused. The interview team consisted of members of the New Hampshire DS wastewater operations staff, design review staff, and town staff. The firms were interviewed, they were ranked, we did additional follow-up phone calls to discuss project teams that were put forward to make sure that, to verify the selection. A scope and fee was negotiated, it was submitted to New Hampshire DES, and it was approved, and then, of course, the same process was done by the, for the Macintosh well. So what is our status? We have completed the studies, we've done some of the preliminary engineering for both projects, the wastewater plant and the Macintosh well. So currently, right now, with DES, Underwood Engineers is the engineer of record for the wastewater plant, and Weston Sampson is the engineer of record for the Macintosh well. So where does that put us? We're at a decision point for the council. We can, A, negotiate a scope and fee with the current engineers of record for the wastewater plant and the Macwell, Macintosh well, which the process with that would be to negotiate a fee with them and supply it to Rural Development and to New Hampshire DES for approval. Then it would come back, and it would go in front of the council for approval. The second thing we can do is we can do the selection process over again, all over again. Send out for requests for qualifications to the firms, review the submittals, interview the firms, which will take some time, select the firm and negotiate a scope and fee, then we need to send that contract for approval, and then we'd get council approval for first reading and second reading. So, discussion points. Both projects have strict schedules. As you know, the wastewater treatment plant has administrative order by consent. What happened there? So, both, so, and the Macintosh well has a corrective action plan that we actually agreed to with the state of New Hampshire because of our water situation. So both have strict schedules, they're tight schedules, so any delay is going to make those even tougher to meet. Both firms are currently working with the town funding and permitting agencies for these projects. Where are we on those? Well, the Macwell is actually pretty much done. We actually have approval to start spending the money through the SRF for the state revolving loan. The funding for the wastewater treatment plant is a little more complicated. We're actually been working with Rural Development, which has required a lot of work because we've been going through and answering questions on the study and, and on the engineering phase of it. We've also are working with them on the funding portion. So that's where that one is. Both firms have extensive knowledge due to the work they've completed on these projects. Next, it's common practice in the industry to establish an engineer during the study and preliminary design phase of the project and continue with the engineer through design and construction unless one has been dissatisfied with the services provided. So that's another thing I've, and the last thing is I reviewed the both project teams. Both firms have put together top-notch quality teams to perform the engineering for these projects, and I just want to do an example for the wastewater treatment plant. We have key team members. We have Dr. James Barnard, who's internationally recognized for developing the Bardenfo process, because part of his name is actually in the Bardenfo name. He's participated in over a hundred designs incorporating biological nutrient removal. Dr. Cliff Randall has been a major innovator in the BNR process for, in the United States, and he's done over eighty upgrades of BNR, of ten thousand gallons per day to five hundred and fifty million gallons a day. The last piece is Christopher, Dr. Christopher Bai, who's been involved in the latest creation of the BioWin model. The BioWin model is the simulator that they run to verify everything, everybody's influence to the wastewater treatment plant, all communities is different, and they use this model to predict results and finalize the design. I have looked at the P's facility, the SBR facility, I've looked at the Summersworth Modified University Cape Town facility, which are both biological nutrient facilities in Summersworth and P's. I've also gone to Hanover. So I have no reserves if the council chooses to stay with these two firms. I'm fully confident that they do an excellent job, but I'm leaving, I'd like you guys to open discussion to decide what you would like to do with the project. And if you would like to go out and redo it, or if you would like to stay with the firms that we have. Okay?
Next slide is my presentation.
Yeah, this is the, I threw this one in. It's just a discussion. Yeah, discussion, yeah.
You had a wrestling match.
Yeah, I had a wrest-
This will refer.
That was a fun one. But this is so, anyway. Anyway, we turn the lights on. Yeah, I just freshened it up. Yeah. It's the way I was feeling that day.
Counselor Downing was first, and then Counselor- Go ahead. I guess my take is, you know, you've been satisfied with the friends we have, certainly, and we already have a price from them, we already have a number from them.
I have a number from one of them, yes, and it is actually in the ballpark of where I estimated the project to be out at.
And I know the slide says time is of the essence, and both of these things are things we need to do, you know, not, we might want to do, or can do, or feel like doing what we're doing. But just, just like, I know the chair would do at his store, and I do at my work, I think always, always knock on a door and always see what else is out there, or what happens in my business, people come back to you and say, well, we want to renegotiate with you. We want to give you ten cents for a gallon of paint instead of, instead of eleven cents like we were, so. In other words, we already have a number from one firm, you said?
Yes, but what will happen is, is we go out and we pick a firm, a different firm, we will try and negotiate that fee with that firm.
Not a lower fee.
Not, not a lower fee.
Why is that?
I mean, we will try and get the best fee we can get. I mean, we try and get a lower fee.
Well, that's all I'm saying.
We could try, but it's not, I don't believe you're going to get anything, they're not going to know what this fee is. They're not going to say, hey, we can come in at fifty cents on the dollar less. We're going to negotiate that fee, and if we can't come to an agreement on that fee, then we can go to the next person in line. That's the way it's set up. So if we, let's just say, we feel in mind that the project is worth a million dollars. So we sit down with the firm that we chose, and they're like, we can't do it for that. It's got to be two million dollars. Well, if we cannot come to an agreement, then we go, we say, hey, you know, we don't feel it's that much, we would go to the next person in line. We would go to the second one.
It's because of the qualifications.
It's, yes, correct. Yes.
You can negotiate after you make the choice, that's-
Correct. Yes.
Good. Counselor Carmichael, please.
Yeah, this is directed to the town administrator.
Yep.
The last couple of meetings, I've asked, and you answered me, that we're going to get a committee together, and we're going to really, there was going to be yourself, Sean, two council people, and a couple of people from our waste facilities that have done work on other waste facilities. So I was under the impression, the last few meetings, that we were going to go out and we're going to get the RFPs from two or three people and come in. This is too darn important to just rubber stamp this. We definitely, I'd like to see, get a different proposals for the design reviews. I can't, these guys have been probably really good, Sean gets along real good with them, but I think it's time to really look at this, instead of just putting this out and saying, yeah, they're doing a good job for us. I just think it's too important. I think we should, should look at a couple of the proposals for the design and review.
Administrator? Well, first of all, this is no rubber stamp. Second of all, I have no authority to appoint a committee. The town administrator doesn't appoint committees.
You mentioned at the last meeting-
Hold on, counsel, let me finish what I'm saying. The council needs to appoint committees. Yes, I said, I would suggest having a committee to review any proposals.
Correct.
I asked Sean to come in today, which he did, to give you the process to go out. He came in and showed, this is what we have now. This is what, if we stayed with the current one, this is the reason why he would recommend it, but he says if we go out, which he has no issue going out, which we will go out if that's the council's wish. That's what we're asking right now. Is that on the record? Is that the council's wish to go out?
Yeah.
And so as soon as that happens, when the report, when the proposals come back, and I would suggest having a committee stay throughout the project, to serve as another board to bounce things off of and to give the authority to do change orders, so we don't have to come to the council every time. But again, this is, we're getting to the point now that we're, if we're going to go out to the RFPs, that's what we want. We want the council, we want the council to sign off now. After that, the committee, when the proposals come back, we're going to have the committees vet it, and then make the final recommendation to the council.
And to be-
Nothing off schedule at this point.
No. And to be clear, it's going to go through a lot of design reviews. This project is required to have value engineering on it. So after the design is complete, we need to hire another engineering firm to look at it because of the cost of the project. It's required. So you'll have another engineering firm looking at it, as well as design review from New Hampshire DES, another engineer, as well as an engineer from Rural Development. It's required. They all want to make sure you're not putting in something that's, A, not going to work, or A, or B, it's going to be, it's too expensive. They don't want to throw dollars to where they shouldn't be gone, so. So it's going to have several engineers looking at it.
Just, just one quick thing, and then Counsel Nazaro. I think, and I sort of understand the question that Counsel Carmichael asked, I think the tone or the way, you know, I read the report or the PowerPoint sort of implied that you were, you were really not giving us a choice as much as you wanted to see an outcome, and maybe that wasn't the intent, but that's how it was read. At least, that's how I sort of read it, so.
I understand.
You know, all that being said, I think the bottom line is we're here to sort of discuss it and-
And that's what I said, for you guys to give me a choice. Give me, give me direction.
Counsel Nazaro.
Is that one, maybe more global question and comment, and then something much more specific? So, ENVWQ 604 dot zero two.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I'm really understanding this. We are being told that we can only choose to get the state money, we can only choose from this group, and you cannot ask how expensive it's going to be.
Correct. It's-
Qualifications.
Yeah, and all of them have been pre-qualified through a process.
So it's like, I'm being told, if I'm going to buy a new car, I can only look at a Ford, a Toyota, and Honda, and I can look at the gas mileage and specifications, but I'm not allowed to ask how much they each cost? It's not, it's not you, it's not you.
Yeah.
That seems ridiculous to me. That's just-
Just for whatever, because I, you know, I re-entered this a little bit when we were on the efficiency committee at the state, and I was flummoxed. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Town Administrator. Qualification-based, when the federal government or someone's going to give you money, and I think you probably know this, but for people it may not be familiar, because I certainly wasn't, they want to make sure that it's predicated- wasn't, they want to make sure that it's predicated on qualifications, and then, doesn't matter what the price is, and if they're going to give you money. Now, if we didn't, if we didn't get any federal money, or state money or any, then, then we could do whatever we wanted.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I will be writing my representatives on that one. I think that's ridiculous. The, I totally get.
Wish you luck with it.
I know, I totally get the concept of looking at qualifications, but it makes absolutely no sense that they've pre-vetted a list of firms, I would assume that they all were qualified, and they wouldn't be giving us something that was going to be harmful to the town. That being said, can we, should we go to RFP, ask for historical cost to include overages of projects?
I, I can't ask for, I can't.
Not, not cost for our project, historical cost, like, historical data on what it has cost to include overages.
I would say.
I think you're walking a tight line and.
But I think you can ask for references.
We do, and.
They can give you an approximate of, you know. I could ask for other communities you worked in, and I just pick up the phone call, my colleague, and say, how's the project turning?
We'll have a percentage.
Well, like I said, in the la, in our, in our process, we made phone calls to communities that they did work in. So, and you can ask in a interview, is saying, well, you know, what's your percentage of change orders? And I, I think that's another reason why you go through this scope and fee, because the DES or RD, they don't want to see change orders. They want to make sure everything in there, and it's complete. So it's.
Okay. I, just so that my point of view on, on this actual specific thing, I think the two firms we've, we've had have done an awesome job. I, I think they're, they're great firms. I think the price tag of this is so high, we wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't put this out to bid, and I really, really hope that these firms are two of the firms we're looking at.
So we're going to do both. Can we have some sort of direction from the total council? Yes, please. And on both of them.
You done, Counselor?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm understanding it, because it seems like the desire of the council is that we have competitive bidding, and the process is that we can't have competitive bidding.
Correct.
Is that the summation of where we're at right now?
Yes.
It's not quite that black and white. It's, this is the way it is. You ask for proposals or qualifications, but you only can ask a certain group. You can't do like we normally do, and put it in the newspaper and say, everybody who wants to put in, come and put in. You actually have to select from a pre-qualified group, right?
Correct.
How big is that group?
There's quite a few.
The state.
Yeah, there's like twenty engineers, there's quite a few engineers on that list.
Who I want to put in, right.
So, yes.
And, and, but it sounded almost like, and maybe I misread this, that you almost have to pick who you want to negotiate with and do it one at a time, rather than ask for a quote. Is my misunderstanding?
Let's be correct. What happens when you rank them, let's just say you interview five firms, and you rank them one through five, you negotiate with the first one first. If you cannot come up with a, what you feel is a, at, an agreeable cost, you go to firm number two.
So you rely on your expertise to know what the best available cost will be internally? You have to know what a great price is before you negotiate?
I've had to negotiate one price that I knew was way off, and the price was a hundred and forty-five thousand, and I negotiated, negotiated him down to a hundred and nineteen thousand, so.
So the price you, you have, do you have a, for the services at hand, do you currently have prices negotiated?
I've been given a draft scope and budget, there hasn't been a back and forth negotiation.
So you feel you could negotiate those down if you stayed with the current firm?
I, I think they're actually a very good price of where it is, discussing it with some other engineers and discussing it with the state.
So if you were going to go, I, I think then, what, the way we would understand that is, that if you were going to a process and you would rank several of them, you would have this group at number one anyways, probably. Is that what you're, am I following?
When I, when I look at this, when I say, well, should we go out or should we not go out? I look at, I look at the project team, I look at, you know, could we get a better project team, you know, what else is out there? I also look at history of what, because I know history of what some engineering firms charge, who charges a little more, who has more overhead. So, on that basis too, I don't feel like we're going to get a better price.
Well, we won't get a better team. You would rank them number one anyway.
I, there's other good teams out there, and I would rank them as one, one of the better teams that I've seen. Are their teams just as good?
And here's the deal, he's one member of the committee.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not just Sean's opinion.
Yep.
It's a, it's a mix of group of people.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure it's, this is not.
Because, because to summarize, I just think that the choice, as I understand the choice, there's no requesting, get a bunch of bids coming back in. That choice isn't available to us, under the system as it works. So the choice is to, to negotiate to our best advantage with the firms we have, or to compile a list and re-rank them and say, who do we want to negotiate with first, who do we want to negotiate with second? Am I misunderstanding, because that's.
Well, I think the, the second part, the, the part that's different is, we'd get the, odds are, we'd hope we'd still get a proposal from our current provider, current engineers. We'd also ask the other engineering firms on that list to also submit proposals. I keep saying proposals, but it's actually qualifications.
Correct.
There's no money attached to it.
That's it. And what you do is, you look at the teams, you look at what they're going, what they're offering, what they could bring to the table, and you rank them. And we all, we all have different reasons around the table of why we, you know, we may pick firm A over firm B or firm C. Sean may pick, well, I've, you know, I know X, Y, Z about this one. I may go in and say, you know what, I've, they give great, I disagree because I agree with this one, I've worked with them, they give great reporting. And we may have somebody from another community say, well, look, this is what I, because that's one of the things we look at, somebody who's gone through the process, and ask them to rank it. And then we'd have two people who aren't usually in it, you know, just to, you know, probably the counselors, who would come in and try to take something from what we, we find out from the proposals. And then we'd come back and negotiate after that.
Can I, can I just go real quick, because I, and then, and then Counselor Bentley, and then Carmichael? Just a couple of things, because I think everybody's asked a question at least once that, that's hit a button. To Dale's question, we could go out to three firms, they may have a different take on the way the plant should be built, or how the construction design should be, et cetera. So I don't think it's quite as black and white as, you know, they're one, two, and three, and it's already predetermined. You know, it's not, you know, you could get an engineer, an architect to give you a, a price, and they may be higher than someone else, but they may save you money on the build. So it's, it's not quite as black and white as, as I think what you're asking. But to get to my real question, I just had a couple for you, Sean. I went back and looked at the resolutions that we got, you know, in our.
Yep.
Our April third packet. And I just wanted some clarification, because the way I read those resolutions, which were passed by the council back, I believe, in two thousand and ten.
Yep.
September, because that's when this contract was signed. It's my understanding, unless I misread it, and I'm, I was pretty careful, those, that was for, that was for study work. I didn't see anything referenced in those resolutions specifying design, construction phase work. And, and I, I looked, so I, I.
No, and I'm not saying there is. I'm saying, when, when I generally go through these projects, I don't like to commit to the whole show.
Well, no, I understand, but I just wanted to.
And the reason for that is because if we are not happy with them, I'd like to go have the ability to, to go in another direction, so we tend to do it in pieces.
And I think you, and I guess what I'm trying to get out is, you know, after having looked at that, you know, because I, I, I think you know I want an RFP, I've asked, I wanted that to be part of our goals.
Yeah.
It's not, it's just, you know, my logic though, just for the record, is, I think at this point of the project, I would feel more comfortable getting two or three firms, or whomever it is, you know, you, you deem, and the state deems qualified, to give us their take. I mean, this is going to be close to fifteen million dollars, give or take, for the, for the design build, when we put this thing together, correct? I'm in the ballpark?
It's fourteen point one is the total.
I'm in the ballpark.
Cost of a year in the ballpark.
So, from my standpoint, because I, I sort of got the impression, reading the PowerPoint, that we had some contract that was already in place, and I just, for the record, I just wanted it to be clear that, from based on what I saw, I didn't see any contract for design build, so I just want, I know, I just wanted that on the record, because.
I just want to be clear, there was no intent for that to say we had a contract, a design build.
And that, that's where we have, the next resolution would be that.
Yes.
Authorize us to enter.
And, and my last comment, and then I'll, I'll let the others go, is, is, you know, and I sort of already said it to Dale, based on his question, it's not just price, which is obviously important, it's the way somebody may approach doing this, and they may have a, you know, I'll leave it at that, I won't, I won't get into that.
I guess I would somewhat disagree, because the way it's put together, and the way the plant, you know, was designed, I don't see how you're going, there's not going to be any major changes to what's going into the facility.
Okay. Counselor Bentley, and then Carmichael.
He can go first.
I just, following up on the Town Administrator, I'd like to see the, whoever gets appointed or whoever volunteers to be on the committee from the town council, to get, get a board real quick.
I think what the, the process would be is, if the council, which it sounds like it's leaning towards that, to ask us for proposals, we will solicit for the proposals, we will, in the meantime, we'll appoint the committee, as soon as we receive the proposals, we'll set up interviews with those firms, and then rank them and recommend them, and come back to the council. Am I missing a step there? Did I look at Sean?
No, there's.
Give us a timeline, Sean, for that, please. Just ballpark, could it, could it be within forty-five days?
It'll take, you know, a little bit of time to get it out to the, the RFP out, probably three weeks to allow them to put their proposals and get them back, and then it'll take, you know, a few weeks to interview and rank and get that process done. So you're probably talking a couple months.
Okay. Counselor Bentley, and then Nazaro.
Tell me, Sean, when you, you've come before us, you know, seemingly forever for me now, who, who tells us the fourteen point one? Where did that number come from?
The fourteen point one.
We voted on.
We did a.
No, who, who said that? Who came up? Who in the calipari and said this is what?
Underwood engineers came up, that's through all this evaluation.
So, kind of a proposal?
No, it's, it's not just a proposal, it's through actual looking at what our costs would be, what the concrete will be, and this was all vetted by rural development and the state in New Hampshire.
Right, right, but.
So it's not.
Forgive me, I'm trying to look at my roofing, and I had a substantial difference in roof.
It's, it's an estimate. It is an estimate, and there's some pieces built in there, yes.
I had two guys, and there was a substantial difference between the three. If they're all equal.
Well, I mean, I guess they're, they're using standard engineering practices to do it.
So company A said fourteen one.
Yep.
And let's pretend company B wants a small profit margin and can do it for thirteen seven, or, I guess that's my point.
Yeah, I don't know.
Is, what?
We'll never know that, because.
You will, because.
It's not cost-based.
We can, yeah, we can, we can still go.
There's a difference here. When it gets down to the fourteen point one, you're not talking to the engineers, you're talking to the construction company.
Yes.
So they're not, it's not the, the engineers who are worried about the cost for the constr- let me take that back, I didn't mean it that way.
Yeah.
They do care about the cost.
Yes.
But when you, you're right, the person who wants to reduce their, their overhead to make that profit, that's the construction company, not the engineering firm.
Yes.
The, the fee that the engineering firm charges, that was, that's where you'd get that, not on the fourteen point, not on the complete fourteen point one, the construction costs. We're, we're still at the design phase, we're not at the hiring.
Yeah, so, so, so I retracted the, there may be another very qualified engineering firm, that their cut out of it is less than current, and I think back to what Counselor Nazaro said, with something of this big, I know what would happen to my business, certainly in conversations with the chair, what would happen to his business, I think we owe it to, to try to see what else is there.
Yes, it'll be, but again, it'll be qualifications.
Qualifications, correct.
Counselor Nazaro, and then Wright.
Right, we'll only see qualifications, so even going on spit, we will never see price A versus, next to price B, next to price C, and be able to make that decision. That's just the way this is set up.
The only way you'll see it.
Which I personally think is wrong.
You'll only see it on the construction portion of it.
The, would this be fixed cost or time of materials, this entire thing?
It's, generally, when we work with this firm, is they, we only pay them for what they do. So if they come in under, they come in under.
So it's time of materials.
Yeah, and if it goes over, it's a not to exceed, so they do the work.
Okay.
If they go over, and we don't pay for it.
Who sets the criteria, should we go to the list and, and get people to submit qualifications? Who sets the criteria that we're, we're judging these organizations?
I actually have a qualification book that we use for, for selecting an engineer.
So, I would like to see, should we go this direction, which it seems like is the direction the council's heading, that one of the criteria be something about, around knowledge of the project, because there's value in how much knowledge they have of the project, and that value has monetary value, because the amount of time it's going to take one engineer, if it's time of materials, their time is money, and the time it's going to take them to get up to speed is going to cost us something. I'm not saying let's single source this, or sole source this, what I'm saying is, I would like to see that be part of the criteria that we're using to judge this. Does that make sense?
Well, it's, it's basically, a firm that's been doing the work all along, kind of has a leg up in that portion because they've been.
Less time that's going to take them to get on board, to take zero.
Correct, exactly.
So I just think that should be one of the criteria we're using.
And it is.
Okay.
It is.
Thank you.
Counselor Wright.
I guess my, what I've been thinking, sitting back here, listen, we've somehow, or you've come up with a price of fourteen point one million, correct?
Yes.
Ballpark figure. Now, if I'm an engineering firm, a construction firm, and I'm in this business, I know what the ballpark we're talking about, and if I'm hungry, engineering firm or a construction firm, I'm going to look at this, and somehow in the process, I don't know how it works, or I'm going to let you know that I think that this is maybe a high price. Is, you have a selection, am I correct?
You mean, you mean afterwards, after the whole process is done?
Sometime before?
No.
No, not at all?
No, because they don't, we don't know the price until after we negotiate it.
But there's no way, and during, even before that, where?
I mean.
Maybe you can explain it better on where I'm trying.
Ideally, what I do is, I go, and I, and I, I actually have a lot of engineering firm friends, and I sit down with them with the numbers I have, and, and ask them their opinion. I also can go to the state and sit down, and they'll say, well, it's a little high, you know, it's a little low, or, or that's a really good price, and I, I do that research, so.
I think that's what he's saying.
No.
But I know what he's saying.
When you're in an interview, someone's going to be like, well, you know, that's a little bit high from my perspective.
Well, I mean, they're not going to say, oh, the fourteen point one, I've already checked that price out with different engineers, and they say that's in the ballpark, that's right where it should be, based on other projects. So we're not, they're not, they don't have this big overinflated price, so I've checked on that. I under, I see what you're saying.
Town Administrator, you had a couple of.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions that.
Clarifications. Clarification.
Clarifications and some things that may not have been addressed. What impact would it have on our rural development applications if we switch? That's my number one concern, because I want to make sure we got money coming into our setup, besides the.
I think it's going to make the, a little more difficult, because we've been actually going back and forth with them with what's in here. I do.
It's not a little more difficult, do we lose money or do we have?
We, we shouldn't lose any money.
That's my question. I forgot, thanks.
One of the, part of.
Seen your move.
Part of, part of the, part of the, part of the process of doing the interviews, you would ask on their workings with rural development and how they do and what their percentage is and how well they do with getting funds out of those. So that would be part of the, the interview process. Because I've asked that question before.
Just while you're trying to remember, you know, I, I've, I talked to a couple of towns about this, you know, because everybody's going out to bid, just to get their perspectives. And I, I think quite a few of them have, you know, put out RFPs, or at least a few of them that I know. And I don't think they've been unhappy having done that, you know, meaning an RFQ or RFQ, whatever.
I've called around and asked different people what they did before I put this presentation together and what the norm was and why they did it. And I specifically called some area towns and asked them specifically why they went back out rather than staying with the firm. So I did do that research myself. It's my job to make sure we're getting the right thing for Newmarket, so I've been doing a lot of that legwork.
Just a, just a comment, because I know, if it's the wish of the council to go back out, and this is not, you know, tip my hand, I do want to say that Underwood has been good to work with so far, and I want to make sure that the council, especially new councils who may not have worked with them as in-depth, but they have worked well since I've been here with a number of projects, always willing to go for the EPA. So I, I just want to put that in there, that at this, cost is a factor, and it always is. And I understand the, the council's desire, but I want to make sure that the public knows that it's not so, it's not based on performance at this, you know, at this time.
Counselor Nazaro.
I mean, cost absolutely, it is a factor, but we are not being allowed to use cost as a determination for this. So then we have to step back and think, and I think it's pretty obvious, the will of the council is to go to RFP for this, so, or RFQ, excuse me. But what are we gaining out of this if cost is something we're not ever allowed to ask?
The only thought I have, and, and I don't want to debate with Sean back and forth, because I just, it's not high in town. You know, I, I think getting a perspective and having a couple of, three firms, all the firms that we had, they were all top light firms. I think, I, the only one I wasn't quite as familiar with was the one that did the McWell and, was it?
Weston Sampson.
Weston Sampson, but, you know, I just, obviously Wright Pierce is a well-respected firm, there's a lot of very well-respected firms. I just don't see any downside to seeing what they come up with, you know, these three firms or whomever it is you, you choose. And I think we're doing our, that's just my take on it. I feel as a council, we should do our due diligence and we should, this is like one of the biggest projects the town's ever done.
I totally get that.
That's, that's my, that's the only way I can.
But I do think that we're trying to get something out of this process, that the process is designed to not let us get, which is a cost comparison.
But you know, when the state, for example, goes out and they get a price for a highway.
Right.
You know, and they've given a bid to company A without mentioning companies.
Yeah.
You know, they don't always give the bid to the same company.
Mm-hmm.
You know, companies come in with maybe different, a different view or a different way of, of approaching something. I mean, that isn't my expertise, but that's why they don't just give it to the same guy every time. And, and then, you know, they negotiate with them, and if they don't like what they see, they go to the next firm and so on. So I mean, I, it's not unusual, I don't think, to go out with an RFQ for these types of projects. I mean, I think it's done all the time, Sean, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, it is. It's, I mean.
You know, I understand the council's desire to go, jeez, I want to negotiate and get the best price in it. But unfortunately, you know, our hands are tied as far as just predating on price, but I, I just don't see any downside. And, and if nothing else, I think the people on the committee and the council will have a very good understanding and education of, of different viewpoints. You know, you'll have three firms come in and explain, you know, what they feel is the direction and how we should go, and I just don't see any downside to it, that's, that's my perspective.
I, I guess my comment, just to close out, and Counselor Pike, is that, that I feel like going out for RFPs, like, it really makes sense, especially when we are able to do that cost comparison. And I, it is going to be good to hear different, different firms, different perspectives on this from an engineering standpoint, not that any of us, most of us really are like experts in that at all, but I, I, I do think the system, I, I keep coming back to the fact that this is a broken system, as far as I'm concerned, that doesn't allow us to do what we're supposed to do, which is watch out for the good of this, of this town and the residents of this town. We are not being allowed to watch out for the right users right now. And I, I just don't like that.
Well, if you can change that at the federal level.
I know, I know.
Let me, let me be clear, all, a lot of these engineering firms all have crackerjack teams. It's just whether you get that team on your project.
Yeah.
And that is huge.
And those are the things that come out when you interview people.
And that, the other thing is to make sure that you have someone that jives with who you're working with, because these people are going to be with you for the next four years. And that's, because that's how long this project's going to take, so it's, it's, it's huge. And I wouldn't, you know, if, I don't care who it was, I wouldn't be recommending anybody if I didn't think the town was going to get a great project at the end of the day. So, but it, but it's fine, whatever you, if you guys want to go out, that's fine, I just.
But you've worked with all these firms, have you not?
I've worked with, um, most of them, most of them, and there, and there are some firms that I.
No, but these firms in particular, that you annotated on the PowerPoint, you've worked with.
I've dealt with them in, in some sort of way or another, correct.
Okay. And you have.
Not specifically, maybe on, you know, a project here, but.
Do you have positive feelings about, well, I know one of them, we have a contract with now.
You've worked with Weston and Sampson.
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about the ones, I thought you were talking about the others.
You've worked with Weston and Sampson.
Yes, I've worked with them.
Trying to do this to.
Yeah, no, I thought you were talking about the people that were interviewed.
No, 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 I'm talking about the, all these firms, Sean, you feel comfortable with, their staff.
They're very, and they've put together two top-notch teams that would do the town.
That's all I was trying to get at.
All right, sorry, I misunderstood.
It's okay. Counselor Pike.
Well, I, I think the only question I had, Sean, is I think we're all leaning towards an RFQ process, and again, but what, I'd like to hear from you and maybe Steve, just what is the risk of that? What, what do we potentially lose by doing that other than a couple of months?
I will tell you right now that you're going to get some of these big firms come in, that they have professional interview teams. So you're not going to see the team you're actually going to deal with. You're actually going to see this dog and pony show, that that's all they do is go around the country giving these dog and pony shows, which is not a good representative, and they do a great job, boy, they look really good. So those are some of the things, sometimes you worry about what team you're going to get. You know, they show you a team and then you get another team, and we really got to guard against those things.
That's why we would have a committee that's working, the town administrator.
I think the number one thing you, we, and like, when I say number one thing, we risk losing, you ask what, what risk we have, time.
Yeah, time is huge.
Time is a big thing. And, and I, and counsel, I understand that you, you asked me two months ago, but again, we had to get through this process to get here. We need to make sure what we need to get to and that. And, let me finish, that we, time is not, if we go for RFQ, we have time, it's after we get the proposals back. I need to ask and make sure that the council trusts the judgment of the committee that they appoint, that we don't get bogged down in month, in what should be a thirty-day situation turns into a four-month situation.
But that's certainly not.
And that's, that's my number one, that'd be my number one concern there. Time also is, we've got to make sure that we, like, I'm trying to think of a way to put it, but sort of like, winterize all of our grants that we have out there to hold them until we go through the process. Those are the only time issues that we have. And I, and I, and I don't have an issue with going out at RFQ. I mean, that's, that's, that is the wish of the council, so.
I, I think if we're going to put a committee together, I think we've talked about two counselors, the administrator, Sean, and Sean wanted to bring in a couple of folks from.
Two other facilities that actually have gone through major projects.
Certainly, I, it's, it's, it would be my desire to take the recommendation of the committee. I haven't, we haven't named anybody yet from the council, but I, I think we would put people on the council that would certainly have that in mind. And, and no one's looking to stall this process.
Would it be out of place to ask, to the chair to ask for volunteers, so we can get that committee going?
In a perfect world, I would like to have volunteers, can I, I'd like to, can I have, have till the next meeting to name?
Yeah.
You know, I'd like to sort of talk to a couple of people, make sure they have the time to do it and the rest of it. I mean, if people wanted, raise a hand for volunteers now, it's fine, Counselor Bentley.
Did he raise his hand?
I'm not.
Sean, forgive me, but, so fourteen one, we got a number. In that number, you saw some type of a breakdown. You know, this is for the building, this is for the concrete, this is for the metal.
Yes.
Somewhere in there, there was an engineering fee.
There are engineering.
Fourteen one and five hundred thousand of that is, is my fee, because I'm building it.
There is engineering and, which is, shoot, I got to go back and remember.
But whatever it is.
What it is, yes, there is.
So help me here, so then we go to another, we already know that from, from one person, we know, we know it from company A. We already know it, that's in that fourteen one. So we go to another qualified one that's in that list and say, company B, we'd like you to bid on this plant. You cannot do that. Why? They're on the qualified list. You're not forced to give it to the company you talked to, there's no law that forces you to go to company A.
These in here have contingencies and things in there for prob, you know, problems and stuff. The, the fee that's come to me so far is, is not, I don't know how to compare it to these numbers, I guess. You know, because they have to build in some sort of, you know, for inflation and they have to build them, there's a lot of stuff that goes into these numbers. And it's very difficult to say, to say that, to do that. But you can't go to a firm and, I'd feel, and start to play around with these numbers and get a sense of where they're at. I mean. Yeah, it's, it's.
But I, for clarification, the fourteen, when we, when we evaluate three companies, they're going to give us a price for their engineering costs or the plant?
They're going to give us a price just for their engineering costs.
Yeah, so that is, I mean, I understand the question of fourteen one, but this, this is predicated on, they're going to, we're not beginning, going to be getting, they're not going to say it's going to cost you seventeen million, I mean, they may, but it's the engineering costs that they're going to be putting in their RFQ.
Yeah, and usually engineering cost is a percentage of what the bid cost is.
I just want to clarify the question, will he, I thought we were not allowed to get any sort of quotes, we're not allowed.
Not.
So they're not going to put.
But they would have it in there, in other words, they wouldn't tell us the number, but if you chose them, they would have an.
If you want, once you choose them, then you.
You can't ask for percentages or anything, you can't do that, you're not going to see any numbers, no.
No numbers at all when we make the selection.
What you do, and what I do and ask, is I ask for scope and hours, which I have done in other projects. And that's how I was able to tell some people were way off the, way off the case. So I ask for a scope of work and I ask for the amount of hours. And you can tell when somebody's throwing a bunch of hours in there.
Oh, I don't know if we have to vote on this or if we have a.
Can we have a straw kind of?
I think it's clear from the council that we need to go out for qualifications again.
Yep.
One thing I would.
You agree with that statement? Yeah, I certainly think it's a goal of the council to go out to RFQs.
Can I just say, you know, you said about these big firms that come on the dog and pony show, you can smell those out pretty quickly, can't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, you know, we don't, yeah, we don't have any control over the price. That leaves us, the only control is the firm we pick.
Just one other thing is, you know, we also realize that the current firm, this hits the reset button. So whatever may have been out there, they need to come in for qualifications again. It may not, ultimately, our negotiations may not be what we're being offered today, because we hit the reset button. So I just, that's part of the, that is a risk, that's a risk, that's the risk.
My question.
Yes. But, I mean, that's part of the.
Very, very competitive world right now.
Right.
I, I would have no trouble choosing a couple of folks, I'd like to have, until the next meeting, and I think we can put that to rest, and then we can get the committee going.
In the meantime, we'll send out the.
You can get the RFQs.
I'll get the RFQ, I'll start working on it immediately.
And we'll, so, we're going to go forward with that separate from the, the forming committee, because we'll have it ready. The committee will be formed by the time we get the proposals back.
Yes, there's time for the committee, because I have to get it and then I have to get it out and publish it and all that other stuff, so.
Could you, publishing it, what do you mean by publishing?
I, I am required to put it in one paper, so I'll put.
Federal, state and federal requirements.
Yeah, I'll put it in one paper and I'll, but I'll also send it out to the roster of engineers, just so it's there, yep, for a requirement.
I'm sure the engineers will all be calling.
They've already been calling.
Are we done with Sean? Can we let him, can we go let him relax? Sean wants to go have a drink. Thank you very much, Sean, thanks for hanging in there. So now we have a very, very easy part of the meeting, finalizing the council goals. So. Did everybody get a copy of the, I'm assuming everybody's seen the, the goals? If memory serves me, at the last meeting, we did this, Counselor Nazaro and Counselor Pike weren't able to be at the goal setting. But I would assume, I shouldn't assume anything, but I didn't get any specific goals mentioned that we, we didn't touch on, so if there's, you know, we can discuss it. Counselor Nazaro?
Yeah, I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to hold this up, but these, to me, seem like tactics and benchmarks and not goals that are leading towards some sort of end state that we were trying to find at the end of the year. These, now, maybe these are, like, and I guess I can piece them together into economic development is probably a goal, or, or. But the, the way these are listed out right now, to me, they look like a bunch of activities and, and measurements of activities and not actually a goal that aggregate into some, and something we're trying to get to, some sort of overarching goal. And I, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that, I, it just, it, I'm not going to, again, I'm not going to hold it up, these all, every, all these actions seem good to me. There's like nothing in here that I look at and like, this is something we shouldn't be doing. But it does, to me, seem like it's just activity without actually necessarily being organized in a way where achieving a goal.
Can I respond just a little? Because we spent a fair amount of time, and I'm assuming you watched.
I watched the meeting, yeah.
So, you know, just take, for example, July, you know, getting the Macintosh well going. You know, and obviously, we've just, you know, beat that pretty good. That ultimately will be a goal that we will have finalized, whichever firm or whomever it is we ultimately hire. I would assume that would be considered, as well as the Mac, the Macintosh well, as well as the wastewater plant. I would assume that would be considered a goal to finish, you know, to, to get consummated through this year, you know.
Yeah, well, absolutely, I would definitely, I'm sorry, keep going, I don't want to.
Well, no, I was just going to just use a couple of examples with respect to August and getting the numbers on the recreation and the plowing and all that stuff. You're, you're right, it is acquiring information to hopefully help us to make a decision on the budget as to how we want to proceed. So, you know, my, my take on this, obviously hiring a new attorney is something we have to get accomplished. So I mean, I guess it's a matter of semantics, but I thought we had a fair amount of things that we, we annotated here. The only one I don't think was, that Steve was going to get was the, the properties. Sometime I thought that was maybe in, was it July? You know, the, the larger properties that we could at least, you know, was it June? I can't recall, maybe it was June.
Fourth one down in June.
I think one was for, yeah, possible economic development.
Yeah. So, you know, and then analyze excess town, yeah, that's right. So the, so the properties ultimately will, you know, help us to make a decision on, on what to do with it. So I guess, how, how else would you approach this? Yeah.
So to me, just based on conversations I heard two meetings ago when we were, when I was here and watching the last meeting, I think one of our goals as a council is probably when you aggregate it, to make sure the tax rate is stable or lower. And everything we're doing with the properties, some of that at least, all the stuff with, that you have going on in August, all the reviewing of different operations, I, I think is both looking at the revenue and the budget stuff that's in here, that's both looking at the revenue side and the expenditure side. In order to aggregate, these activities will aggregate up to us ensuring we have a stable or lower tax rate. To me, that is like the goal, the goal is lower tax rate, the activities that are going on in here are how we're going to achieve that. I think this is crucial, right? These, these tactics are absolutely crucial. But I'm, I just want to know that we're aiming at some north star of a goal of, we're trying to get to this by doing these things. That, that's, that's my point. The Macintosh well is another great one. I think that we should probably choose a waypoint of where we need to be in, in collaboration with Sean, inform Sean of where we need to be by the end of the year and ensure that we are conducting activities through this. And I like this a lot, the way it's structured, ensuring that we're staying on track with activities, because we do have a tendency to sort of wander sometimes. They, over the last couple of years, I've noticed that. So I think this is the right thing to do. I just want to know where are we supposed to be at the end of the year, so we can measure whether or not we've achieved that success. Not just the activities around the Macintosh well, but where are we trying to get to by the end of the year.
Well, I think we left the last column, I was going to be lowering the taxes, but I think there was kind of an understanding or keeping the tax rate flat or, you know.
I think there's a, if you look at the memo I gave at the last council meeting, there were four. I think there's a, if you look at the memo I gave at the last council meeting, there were four, three or four overarching items. One of which was establish a tax rate lower level to fiscal year fourteen. You're right. This is the.
The way to get there.
The map to get there.
This is operational plan.
Right. And the other one, the next one is beginning managed Macintosh well and wastewater human facility project. Then we have the map under there. And then I think the third was economic development. So these are the maps.
So what we really could do is put a title and he kind of.
Yeah, these are maps to get there.
I'm sorry, Alyssa, I was going.
Well, you could just have, you could have a second document that lists the goals and, you know, that put these under there, but it's nice to have them by timeline. I think for what we got to do right now, this is actually useful.
Yeah.
And we can go back to Steve's document or create the document again where you had those, it's sort of category heading. It's just a different way to organize it, but it doesn't change what we need to do.
Council Bentley?
I understand what Council Nazaro is saying, but maybe we're, that's what I said. So analyze town property recommendations. Right next to, we'd have a letter, much like at my work, we do quality, safety measurements and it will have a letter. Why are we doing this? Because of quality? Why are we doing this because of safety? Why are we doing this because of production? So next to analyze town property could say the goal, the tax rate. Next to, you know, review town personnel, that won't really touch the tax rate, but you know, that might be another overall goal. So a lot of these can have some categories, maybe we'll, so we'll say, why are we doing, oh, that goes to that. You can draw a line to them. So maybe, you know, maybe that's a way to get there.
Want to say?
A sub map, you know, a sub.
Council Pickering?
I noticed from Steve, your memo, April twenty-third, and you under establish a tax rate lower fiscal year fourteen. One of the things on the review regionalization of services, police, highway and purchasing, but brought forth in, in August. I don't see police on here. And also the other thing was planning. It did never, did even make it on, on, on this original.
It does.
In August.
August, review planning operations.
Okay, my apologies. Okay, I'm sorry on that one. Police is missing.
Okay, we can, we can add police to review that.
Anything else, Council Pickering? While you're looking.
Go ahead.
Council Nazaro?
So totally get that. I, I think this is where Vice Chair Bentley was going on this about having letters after. Just, again, this is a formatting thing, but for me, I think it will help keep us, keeps like my mind straight the way I see it. If the farthest right-hand column here had like the goals and then as you went along horizontally by month, the activities that were associated by goal were in that row or series of rows. Then you could see what activities are we doing each month in order to achieve one, each of our goals. So that, I, to me, that would make it very clear that we had a robust tactical plan for achieving what our overall strategic goals were.
Sounds good. Yeah, that would be, I mean, hiring the town attorney, for example, in the charter commission is, you know, that was stuff we just had to do.
It's another.
There's like.
There is an other category.
That's going to have to be miscellaneous, so we're going to be crazy. Town administrator, did you want, were you?
Nope, I'm all set.
Everybody else? Council Pickering?
Well, I, I want, I'd like to thank the town administrator for spending all his time putting this together. I'm sure he didn't do it in five minutes. Pretty, pretty decent, I believe, from what I can see of it. One other thing that I, and I don't know what category it's going to fall under, but having discussions with other, other towns about purchasing equipment together. In other words, you know, we could have a street sweeper, but why does Newmarket have to buy it when maybe four towns need, need a street, a street sweeper also? So I know that was mentioned and could that be added to the list?
And I agree, and it should be on there. I guess there's one sort of the flip category. There's something that should be almost like ongoing.
Yeah.
That there's not a deadline. That's not a deadline.
Maybe that's why it's not on there.
Right. And I think I, thinking about it, I think that's why it wasn't. That could have been oversight on my part, but there's some that are ongoing.
You know, and, and thank, you know, this is a specific in general. And, and I, I understand, you know, tying him to specific, whether it's tax rate or the wastewater. Some of it's fairly obvious, but I, I do think if we coded it, it would be fine. It would be easy to do. If we can do this this year, I'll tell you by November, this would be, I mean, I've, I've watched town politics for a long time and I have, this is a, this is a pretty, um, this is a full plate. It really is. And, you know, I, I commend the administrator for not melting down during some of that discussion because it was, you know, it was fairly, you know, fairly lengthy. There is one, one area that I just want to clarify. In, in the October timeline, it said, "Using the Economic Development Committee report and begin the process of analyzing land tracts in the community and determine if and which properties are good for development." I don't know that Peter Quas is necessarily the person. I think he can give us some input on that. And, and I, I'm not jumping the gun. I just want to make sure nobody has any false expectations. I think if and when the time comes that, you know, the committee has gotten the public feedback and we're on track and hopefully by September, October, we will have achieved public input, planning and, and the, and the committee. And we're on the same page. We may need to find a land use person who is someone who can, you know, do a real analyzation, I guess if that's a word, of, of the pros and cons of, of certain areas, access, cost for access. You know, just so we get the feedback we need so we can make good decisions as far as what we're, you know, getting into. Because, you know, there's nothing more frustrating than spending three or four months analyzing a project that is so financially upside down, which I did spend about a year of my time doing. And I don't mind doing that on occasion, but you know, I, I think that's the step in here that we might need to do. And I didn't want people to think that Peter was going to do that. The only other thing I'd, I'd like to comment on, once we code this, I think we should put it on the website, you know, and, um, you know, and then it may be just reformat it and make it really clean.
Yep.
And then we all have it and we can just sort of, you know, keep, keep track of them and then the public can give us some input if they have any input.
Yeah.
So, any, I'm sorry, there's more than a few. Council Wright?
You know, I like this format. It'll be a first, absolutely. But I look at this as an evolution. Really just started. I think next year it's going to be better. I think the people that we work at, the town council members are only going to improve it. And it's, I think it's a start, you know, but of course it can be improved. And like I said, it's the first time that I've seen something like this and it's only going to get better.
Just to quickly add to that, please note it's only six months.
Right now.
And there is a reason for that, that one, other things are going to pop up that we're not anticipating that are going to bump some of these goals off. That I didn't want to try to predict what we're going to be doing next March. And also, if you go a full year, you do have an election in between, but you've got to let the new council, you know, determine what the goals may be after that too, so.
A lot of this is going to help us, I think, with budgeting too this year. Because, you know, we always run into budget season and then we, we're always asking those same questions. Council Nazaro?
Yeah, I think you mentioned this last meeting, Chairman, that I missed, that you'd mentioned that I'd mentioned at the meeting before. This is absolutely going to help drive our agendas every month so that our agendas are actually targeted around actions that are achieving our goals. So I think this is absolutely great.
Yeah, I think that's what I, you were looking for that, so I think that.
I think this is, this is awesome for that. One thing that I don't see in here, and maybe it was just decided not to put it right now, is, because at the end of the day, we can do everything we can about the town side of the tax rate, but that it, when I get my tax bill, it is a community tax bill. So I don't know, there's really nothing here about trying to find ways to work closer with the school district. And I don't, maybe there's just not, maybe it's just not right right now. Maybe it was decided this is not the time for that. But that definitely, to me, would be some sort of activity we could do in order to try to fall under the tax rate, a goal.
Just for the record, unfortunately, I got an email the other day that McMooney had to resign for personal issues. And we were going to meet, so I, I'm not sure, I've been watching some of the school board meetings. I'm not sure they've, they've named a new chair, chairperson yet. But if, if and when that happens, I'm more than happy to sit down and if we can have some joint discussions between the superintendent and the town administrator. I'm happy to, I'm, I'm happy to reach out and do whatever I can.
Yeah, I would love to see some of that.
I was actually looking forward to, to getting together, but it just wasn't to be, so. That being said, that pretty much covers the, the agenda.
Reformatting, get it out.
Yeah, before, is there any new business or old business, Council Bentley?
Well, we'd be remiss. We didn't congratulate the nine members of the charter commission. And it was great to see so many people run, twenty people, or I guess nineteen at the end. It's great to see some new faces and some people that certainly I haven't seen run or been, you know, try to get on commissions or anything before. So that was great. I've had a lot of questions, Mr. Administrator, and not, not that the answer can come now, but I think there's a lot of confusion, even watching the candidate's night tape and talking to voters yesterday when I worked here and, and about what they're, what they are and are not allowed, are allowed and not allowed to do, what they can do, what they should be charged with. And, and a lot of people were asking me yesterday, well, how is this commission going to bring more business? Or how is this commission going to lower tax? It isn't. And I don't think we need the answer tonight, but I'd like some type of, because there's a lot of confusion out in the town about what this commission can and can't do and what their charge is.
And I do have an answer, actually.
Good.
The town clerk and I have been working on, lack of a better term, an orientation packet. And one of the first things when they, after they're sworn in and they choose the chair, we're having the municipal association attorneys meet with them to outline the processes that they need to follow and what they can and cannot do. So we want to make sure that they're on, and they can ask, it's a chance for them to ask questions and they get all their answers, questions answered, and then from there they move on to continue the process.
Will that be taped?
It'll be on TV. We're already in the process of setting up a webpage that will also explain the duties of the charter commission. And hopefully if the charter commission agrees to, because they are an independently elected body, post all their materials, we'll be able to post all that material on the website as well, so people can see it.
So that'll annotate all of the specific responsibilities or chores, so to speak, that they, they're charged with.
Just to follow up, some of the questions I was asked were start dates. Do we know when they're having their first?
The town clerk has sent out a, an email to the members, because the clerk, in this process, the clerk actually kicks, kicks it off. Because they, she needs to call the meeting to order. It's going to, it looks as of now at to be May twenty-eighth, barring any recounts or any other situation like that at seven PM. That's where they're going to have their organizational meeting in that lesson plan will be that night, again, in lack of a better term. The packets will be handed out, so it'll kick off that day. And there is a very strict timeline that they must follow, set by state statute, that they will be going over as well that night.
Council Pickering?
I have just two things and it shouldn't take but a moment. Personally, I've served with about four town administrators and I believe you're the fourth one. And I've asked lots of questions and probably more of you than of the rest of them, and you have.
Like me.
It's a scene.
It's a scene.
That was a light.
I just want you to know that I've, I've been very pleased getting answers back in a timely fashion. In some cases, that's rare. There, there is one that we did miss and, and you asked me earlier today if there was anything. I couldn't remember it, but I had a note. And I asked in March about getting mileage and hour readings on all of our town-owned vehicles. Has anything been done on?
They are in the, they are working on that and I'm asked the finance director to come up with a town-wide system to continue that maintenance in retracting mileage. Because I want to, I agree, it's something that we are asked every year from the budget committee. I don't want to go in this year without it.
CIP, they're quite interested in something like that. And I think it's, it's quite important to, to have a baseline here.
Absolutely.
And the other thing is, not that it's been deactivated, but I think we need to continue the efficiencies committee. I, I put reactivate, but it hasn't been deactivated. I know there was a list a mile long that they had things they could work on. People are ready, willing and able to do it. I don't see how it could hurt us letting them go and come up with some more suggestions to present to the council. Do we have, do I have any comments on that?
I have one quick comment, just as a person who was on the outside looking in.
Yeah.
I think maybe, you just sort of hit it on the head at the end. I think maybe initially, they should make specific, I know they wanted to aggregate, you know, from a regionalization, the school and the town. And obviously that worked out, or that turned out to be a difficult chore to consummate. I, I think if they were to make suggestions or recommendations to the council and/or to the school, and then if there's a way that we can aggregate the two, great. But there never seemed to be a way for the, and maybe, you know, that, the efficiency committee, maybe it wasn't set up to just bring things to the council or just to the school. Because the, the focus, and I could be wrong, so correct me, several of you were involved and, and I was not on that committee. But it broke down when, when the school and the town was trying to do the finance together and this and that. I think the council would be more than happy to look at ways to be more efficient as far as the town's concerned. And I can't speak for the school side, but I think if, if it turns into the same thing that happened last year, then we're going to need some step in between because there's no way to facilitate that or, 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 or make that happen. You know, that's where it sort of fell apart. I mean, what was your impression? You were on the committee.
Yes, I was. And there, there were, there were bickering going back and forth between the town and school, as we all know. And we didn't gain a, a lot of footage there. However, there were other issues that were brought up. One of them being propane-powered town vehicles, which we haven't accomplished. And yet, everything's in place to make that happen, including the, the vendor, the town mechanic that we presently have, ready, willing and able to start the process once we give them the green light. And so we certainly could accomplish that. And I don't think personally that the efficiencies committee members were allowed to, to go for it and, and come up with other things. There was all this bickering going on and there are many, many other areas that could be looked at and brought back to the town council and say, look, this is what we're going to, you know, attempt. And I, I just don't see any reason when you have people ready, willing and able to volunteer their time. Todd Berry, a classic example, ready to, to, to work hard, never given an assignment. We just got so wrapped up in this town-school stuff that everything else just, it, it fell by the wayside. I, I think we can still make some tremendous gains by having that efficiencies committee working, trying to come up with ideas for us to save some more money.
Just for clarification, has it been decommissioned?
No.
Phil?
Yeah, I'll point on that, yeah. I think we left the last one with, and again, he's got a lot on his plate, but that the administrator and the superintendent were going to work together to find places. I, I think that that might be a piece of it, but it's not the totality of it. If we really want to find efficiencies, there's really three places we can look. We can do the work we're doing right now more efficiently or more cost-effectively. We can team as a community with the school to do things more effective, more efficiently. Or we could look at regionalization. I, I think that there's a lot of things that I saw on the, on the tactical level there where we're trying to find ways to, you know, the goal of keeping the tax rate stable or lower, that we should, there's only seven of us up here and the town administrator's plate is completely overflowing with activities. That, that, it's more human capital, capacity that we actually could leverage to investigate some of that stuff and come back to us with, you know, this is a report on what regionalization of X would save us. That, that I, I would love to see them more active again and find a way to, to ensure these individuals are just like allowed to run with something and come back to the council with, this is our recommendation on this subject. Like we almost commissioned them to conduct studies and investigations and come back to us with that information.
You know, it was hard to close this, like, you know, you brought up the LP or the, you know, the propane thing. You know, is, and correct me if my memory is wrong, at one point we heard that it would eliminate the warning. At one point we heard it wouldn't bother the warning. We were given, and that's no one's fault in particular. I'm just saying, from where I sat, I never felt like the circle got closed on a lot of the suggestions. And that's not, you know, pointing any negativity at anyone. It's just, unless you have authority, which they didn't have, when, when efficiency committees in other towns, I think, do these things, at least, I, I looked into it a, a very little bit and they're usually made up of the.
up of the people that can actually make action on it. And it's, and so if we're gonna have an outside entity, then they're gonna have to have someone that's gonna be able to really, you know, dot those i's and cross those t's and make sure there's no ambiguity, is, 'cause that was some of the disconnect. And then the other part was, you know, forcing, you know, finance, we're gonna do finance together, and it just, you know, it just never happened. It was just very frustrating.
I, I think.
And I wasn't even on the committee.
Yeah, but I, I think as far as closing the loop goes, I think it's this body right here that has to close it, right? It's, we got to the point where, like, like with the auto gas or whatever, that it, we just never really voted.
Well, we never got the information to.
Right, yeah.
It wasn't really our fault.
You need to come back.
You know, we.
You need to come back.
The information was, I believe, from Chief Seer.
It was gonna vote the warranty.
Well, that was, yeah, but we were told, what, all I'm saying is, we were told the antithesis of that, and then we were told, you know, and we sort of like, we didn't know where to go, it was like, do we do it, do we don't do it?
Yeah, we should just be, I think, I, I think that we need to leverage them as, as additional capacity for us, so that we can actually get more accomplished than, than we can with us alone, but we also have to hold ourselves accountable to, when they come up with recommendations, we're gonna give them a yea or nay vote, and we're just gonna move on with it, as opposed to let things sort of linger.
Yeah.
Town administrator?
Agree with Council Nazaro on that one. It's, I think that was part of the problem, I think it was part of the problem of the men, a lot of things, is that when things would come to the council, they weren't proposals, like concrete proposals, A, B, C, D, this is what we wanna do. It was more of an idea and saying, well, what do you think? And the council said, or somebody, Bonnie would say.
We ask questions?
Ask questions and say, well, we get, we think this, but that's the closing of the loop. I think if you, if, for an efficiency committee or any committee to work, even, I think even myself, I tend to come up with a recommendation, it's a concrete one, and this is what I recommend and vote yea or nay. And then if you vote nay, we come back with a different one, versus just the, the, you know, grand scheme of something, and I think that that's something that the efficiency committee could do, and I think it's a great idea that they, you know, we, we all can't study every efficiency, and that's the committee should do, is come up with a final proposal, and we submit a resolution and say, this is what we think we should do, and then the council vets that proposal. So, it's a yea or nay on all of them.
Well, I mean, if, 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 you know, the last I heard, a few people sort of took their name out or whatever, so if you wanna, if you wanna.
Advertise?
Yeah, take, you know, put it on the site and see if, if people wanna, you know, see where it goes. Council Carmichael?
I was just gonna nominate Counselor Pickering to help run that, facilitate it.
He looks ecstatic.
Do you hear that bus coming?
Better idea is for him to put it out.
By the way.
Would you need a vice chair?
I don't want that look at me again. I don't want that look.
Excuse me, report. Everybody say, happy birthday.
Oh, no.
Oh, happy birthday.
Ninety-three.
Forty-eight years old, can you imagine?
Twenty-nine.
Any, that's, do we have any other comment, Phil?
Yeah, just, real quick, it's my last opportunity to, to say this. This Saturday is the Veterans Memorial Committee Golf Tournament. We are full up on golf teams. Myself and Counselor Carmichael will be out there chasing balls through the woods, I am sure. Different teams, though, so you better watch out. But if people either want to donate to the cause, that still is always an option. Dave Wade, his contact is on the website, on the town website under the Veterans Committee,